I'm Jared Miller, City Manager of the City of San Marcos. Conversations, an open conversation with the community are of the utmost importance to us, and we're very pleased to have the opportunity to talk with you tonight. We're planning a number of opportunities to collaborate in the future as we plan and implement flood recovery and resiliency projects and activities. As we go, please share information that you received at this meeting with your friends, with your neighbors. Also, this meeting is being streamed live on the city's website, and there's an opportunity for our online viewers, as well as those here with us, to submit questions during the question and answer section towards the end of the presentation. I understand there's a number of concerns that this meeting is taking place at the same time as the planning and zoning commission meeting. We knew that reaching everyone at a convenient time and location would be a challenge, so we planned two town hall meetings with exactly the same presentation, so citizens would have the opportunity to choose the one, the meeting tonight, that fits their schedule, or the meeting, the flood meeting that fits their schedule the best, and to go wherever they felt was the best place for them to be tonight. I understand that there's conflict. There wasn't originally a conflict with this meeting. There was going to be a conflict with P&amp;Z, but there wasn't a controversial issue, or at least an issue of interest at P&amp;Z when we scheduled this meeting. There is now. I understand that. That's why we made this meeting as redundant as possible, the Saturday's meeting. That meeting is going to be at Fire Station 5 at 10:00 a.m. to noon on Saturday. Fire Station 5 is over on River Ridge Parkway, just off 35. Now, before we begin, I'd like to recognize the city council members who have joined us this evening. I believe we've got Mayor Pro-Tam John Temides, Detective Mayor Pro-Tam Lisa Pruitt is over there. We have Melissa Derrick is here. There she is. I know we've also got Scott Gregson on the way, who is caught in traffic right now, and I think that's going to be it for tonight. Also with us, we have a number of key staff members as we go through this process. Ken Bell, our emergency manager. We've got Richard Ray Nosa, our floodplain administrator, back in the back. Yes, there he is, waving his hand. We've got Colette Jameson, Assistant City Manager. There she is. Janice Hendricks, our Community Initiatives Administrator, otherwise known as the CDVG Guru. We've got several other staff members here. Staff member here tonight, can you raise your hands and kind of wave around just a little bit? Alright, thank you. So we've got a lot of staff members here tonight to be able to assist with questions at some point during the meeting. We also have our representative from the Blanco River Regional Recovery Team.
Dr. Phil.
Rich Hildreth. Oh, and other students. Oh, we've got a crew. We've got a whole crew from VR3T. So, tonight's focus is on flood recovery, and the primary topic of discussion is going to be the CDVG Disaster Recovery Grant. We're going to discuss a brief summary of recovery efforts to date since the 2015 floods. We're going to take a closer look at the CDVG DR grant. That's the Community Development Block Grant, Disaster Recovery Grant, its objectives, and how the grant funds may be used. We're going to talk about what you can do until a permanent flood management or flood mitigation project is complete. We'll talk about unmet needs and the VR3T's work with flood recovery. We're going to seek feedback from you through an interactive poll. And I'm going to ask you questions about this device here in just a few minutes. We're going to take a Q&amp;A session where we'll take answers from the public, have staff members answer those questions. We're also going to have discussion tables set up at the end of the meeting, so that you can go around different sections of the room, have more intimate conversation where you can get a little more detail than what we might be able to give in a large group setting with questions and answers. I also want to make everyone aware that there's assistance available. For those who don't speak English, it's their primary language. We've got Spanish assistance tonight, and we want to make sure that we are as available as possible to anyone who is attending tonight. What's been done? I'll jump out myself there. Alright, it's been nearly a year since the Memorial Weekend Flood, and six months since the All Saints Day Flood. In the immediate aftermath of both of those events, you heard a lot from City Hall, we gathered for a town hall meeting, like this one, neighborhood meetings, disseminated a lot of information via news media, flyers, social media, and other communication outlets. A lot happens during response phases of a disaster. It's fast-paced, and there's a host of time-sensitive and crucial communications that take place during this time. During the immediate response, we worked on communication, search and rescue, we had the evacuation center, donation center, volunteer resource center. We did assessments on all of the damaged properties that y'all saw within days of the flood. We coordinated with federal, state agencies, and lawmakers. FEMA primarily immediately after the event. Once the response phase is over, then recovery begins. The city and our residents begin to assess the damage, make repairs, and look for solutions. Current activities focusing around the Blanco River Recovery Team, or the VR3T, long-term recovery, trying to identify unmet needs of citizens, ongoing infrastructure repair, roads, bridges, dams, city property. Between the city and the county, we have a substantial amount of infrastructure that is still ongoing repair or is trying to find ways to plan repair or fund repair. Permanent floodplain compliance, continued information gathering and reporting, and then also working with our federal and state, states to advocate for additional assistance. Not every solution for prevention or recovery is feasible. We just don't have the funds to address every unmet need or to implement all of the mitigation and flood management projects that we would like to do. That's why we've been working to secure grant funding for flood recovery. Ken Bell, and I'm going to call him up in just a moment, I know he's talking to Janice right now, but Ken Bell, our Emergency Management Coordinator, has been instrumental in helping us find and apply for federal and state grants. I'd like to invite Ken up to give us a rundown of the grants we've applied for and their status.
Good call. Good evening. Ken Bell, I'm the Emergency Management Coordinator for the city. I'm not going to bore you with a lot of the details of some of these things, but if you notice, there's some green, and if you can catch that light in that right next to you, see if you can maybe, the other one, just maybe you can see. So the green ones are grants that we're working for strictly for recovery, that we've already received some sort of activity or action, mostly through folks getting individual assistance and public assistance through FEMA, obviously the CDVG DR. If you look below that, there's a host of other things that we're currently working on right now. Most of these grants are required to be completed by mid-July, and most of you I've talked to before about how this process goes, and how slow and arduous it is. And it's intentionally designed that way because Congress won't give money until an emergency happens. So that's happened twice. They recognize that, so there's a lot of pockets of dollars in different places, which hopefully we're going to leverage to make the biggest bang for the buck, for lack of a better term. So rather than commit ourselves to one grant or one pocket of money, we're trying to get as much as we possibly can to help reduce the impact to residents here in San Marcos.
I mentioned state and federal partners. You can see through the grant opportunities that I'm not aware that we've left any stones unturned. If we ever come up against or become aware of additional funding available, we're obviously going to jump on that as quickly as possible. Just to give you an example of how aggressive some of our staff members have been in seeking out funds, when we were in Washington DC in March, we were meeting with, Ken who were we meeting with? No, the city council. We were meeting with Housing and Urban Development. They mentioned to us that the Natural Resources Conservation Service had funding available from a previous funding of $127 million. They had $27 million still unused and unspoken for. There were no projects in the queue, and they said that as soon as eligible projects were submitted, they would be allocated funding, and we had the opportunity to submit for that. Natural Resources Conservation Service is responsible for constructing flood control dams upriver of the city of San Marcos. We, this was about 9:00 in the morning, we had a completed application submitted prior to 11:00 a.m. We're still working through that process, but we don't leave it laying for very long. Now, Ken mentioned the CDVG DR grant. First, let's talk about what the grant really is. The grant was part of a nominee of us bill that was originally proposed to address disaster recovery in South Carolina. Thanks to leaders in Washington DC, we were made aware of the grant during our disaster recovery trip to meet with our federal congressional delegation. There, we were able to share the need for funds in Texas, and specifically here in San Marcos. Once the bill was passed and HUD was able to assess available funding and the most pressing needs, the state of Texas was allocated $51 million. The city of Houston, Harris County, received $67 million, and the city of San Marcos is going to receive $25 million. The city's not yet received the CDVG DR grant funds. Once we do, there's still going to be a very lengthy process before projects can be fully executed. I want to take a look at the anticipated timeline. Federal Register is the document that announces formally the award of the grant. It will also carry any specific guidelines, restrictions, desired projects, and any other information that we're not aware of at this time. It's going to be a very complete document, a very extensive document. That'll come out in the next 30 to 60 days. Then we'll perform heat assessments, continue to solicit public input, so this is going to be an ongoing theme as we go through this process. We'll prepare an action plan. This will be due 90 days, well, later than 90 days after the Federal Register is issued. So we have not started that 90-day clock yet, but as soon as the Federal Register is issued, that'll start, and we'll get that done as quickly as we can reasonably do it. Then we'll submit that plan to HUD, Housing and Urban Development, for approval of the action plan. And then administration of the grant is going to take however long it's going to take, depending on what projects are selected and approved, selected by the city, approved by Department of Housing and Urban Development. When we're talking about HUD, I think it's also important to note, I think the award of the $25 million is due in no small part to the familiarity that the HUD Secretary, John Castro, has with central Texas and San Marcos specifically. So I think it's important to note that for this time. How can funds be used? City staff and council members met with HUD officials in Washington DC, and we've had a number of conversations with HUD staff, the national and regional offices since then. One statement that was highlighted in every conversation was the requirement to use these funds for community resiliency projects. The most operative word that we've been discussed and has been emphasized to us over and over and over is "resiliency." Projects and programs, and when you're talking about resilience, you're talking about projects and programs that repair damage and prevent repeated damage in the future. This list is taken directly from the HUD DR material provided to the cities. It's also important to note, and as I mentioned earlier when talking about the Federal Register, that there may be additional requirements listed and registered once it's issued. So as of now, this is what we know about the project. We have a significant amount of material, but we didn't want to put the entire rings of information up on this page. So we've got a lot of people working on this project every day. Examples of eligible activities. What does a flood resiliency project look like? This slide shows some of the types of projects other communities have completed using CDVG DR grant funds. It's also worth noting that HUD officials mentioned leveraging the CDVG DR grant funding to pay for matching contributions on other federal disaster recovery projects. So we might be able to leverage this $25 million to affect a significantly higher amount of investment in our community for resiliency projects. We're going to obviously evaluate that in every way possible, and if it's beneficial for the community, if the community wants us to do it, if the council wants us to do it, we're going to exercise those options to the highest level possible. We want to maximize the amount of investment into resiliency projects that we possibly can. But anyway, for those of you who can't read this, projects that eliminate or significantly decrease the chance of repeated flooding, danger residents, staff, property loss such as dams, drainage, river management projects, raising homes, other home cleanup projects, buyout programs, public housing, shelter, workforce, and other preparedness solutions. I know one thing that's of the highest importance, and I was having a couple of conversations with residents that are in here earlier before the meeting, is what do you do in the meantime? The list of project types and eligible activities includes a number of projects and project categories that could take several years or longer to complete. We don't have a deadline on how long it takes to spend the money. That's, all that means is that HUD's not going to take the money away from us if we don't spend it in a certain amount of time. That said, council's objective, staff's objective, and I know the community's objective is to find reasonable and effective projects and implement those projects as aggressively and timely, in as timely a manner as possible. So you saw the list of steps that we have to take. That's a very high-level list, so there is going to take some time to get these things done. We know that at any time, there could be another storm or flood event. As we saw in 2015, right when we thought we were just about cleaned up from May, we get October. It doesn't happen every year like that. In fact, I don't know that it's ever happened like that, but we do know that three times in the last three years, we've had major flood events, and that's borne true as we go back into the past, significant number of flooding events over time. So we do know that there's a very high possibility that we could have another event in the future. Unfortunately, there's no quick or easy way or project to address our vulnerability to flooding. That's why we're doing everything we can to be as prepared as possible to respond and provide aid in the event of future emergencies. We're also encouraging you to do the same within your households. I want you to have a family evacuation plan, emergency notifications, register with 911 and register with mobile notifications, family preparedness plans, communicate your needs. I would recommend working with your neighbors. Have a neighbor plan. Do you have anybody who's elderly, not as mobile as what you are? Have plans where you know that if their kids or if somebody who can help them is not around, then you've got a plan to help them. I know we've got to all reach out and help each other, and I don't need to tell you all this. Y'all know that. I want to point out Jane Houston is here as well. I omitted Jane Houston. Councilmember Jane Houston is here. I don't want to leave anybody out, but that's five council members we've got here tonight. That's a big deal, I think. Sounds like me but I'm not my boss, so it's about really nothing to add. What about other needs? While we're very grateful for grant funds that will help us all going forward, we know there's still unmet needs in the community from the past two floods. Brazos River Regional Recovery Team, otherwise known as VR3T, is a resource that may be able to help with many of your unmet needs. If you haven't already tapped into it, now's the perfect opportunity to get connected with the VR3T. I'd like to invite Rich Hildreth with VR3T to come up and share some information on the organization's mission and the progress they've made in the last year.
Rich, thank you.
Thank you.
Probably low age, you've got to work last every once in a while. First, I want to thank everybody for letting me come down and talk to you tonight. The figures I'm going to give you are about, about a month old, so they actually have gone up a little bit, and we expect there may be some additional changes from additional cases that may come in. Currently, we have 41 houses that have been, that have needed complete replacement and/or very, very serious major repairs. We have 41 houses that have been completed. We have another 800 in commit, or in construction progress right now. There's another 100 homes that need minor repairs. Those have been completed, but we have more than 500 homes that we've gone out, we've taken all the flood debris out, we've taken it off the properties. In some cases, we've built a couple sheds and a couple outbuildings to replace those. But we still have probably, we estimate currently about 700 cases, 700 more homes that need to be repaired. Now, some of these may be minor, some of them may be major. As it goes through the case management process, that's when we find out how much we really have. Not including the voluntary organizations that have come in from out of state, and some of the local ones that have come in and helped us, we have over 18,000 just individual hours that have been donated by, you know, by groups like from the college, from Maricor and some of the other places. We have partnered with over 25 organizations around the country. In fact, today, we have Part 911, which is firefighters and police officers from New York City, that they were survivors of the 9/11 attacks, and what they do is they now travel around the country to pay back the love and the thanks that was given to them by going out and helping. They're actually building three houses right now in Wimberly. They're going to be back this fall to go ahead and build some houses here in San Marcos. But we have other organizations that, all around the country, that have been here helping. We also have a number of, number of groups that we've reached out to for funding. Shell Oil Corporation is one that is currently in process. Bear Paint just donated 600 gallons of paint. It's about $30,000 worth of paint. These are costs that, what we do is we match volunteer agencies with grants and other funding that we can get, the type materials, and we try to rebuild these homes at no cost to the homeowners. Most importantly, the one thing I wanted to mention tonight, everything that we do here stays in the community. Any funds that we raise are going to be used in the four counties, Blanco, Hayes, Caldwell, and Wollup County. This is the first regional long-term recovery organization ever built in the state of Texas, and we're determined to show that this is the way of the future. The one thing I want to emphasize, that everything that's done here stays here in San Marcos, Wimberly, Martinale, and the adjacent areas. I invite anybody that has, still has questions about what VR3T does, or if you have unmet needs. We have one of our case managers and some volunteers out here in the back. We'd love to talk to you, or go by Dunbar Center, and we'd love to talk to you there. So, thank you.
Alright, thanks, Rich. I think that it's obvious then through, you know, what you've seen on the news, through military activities or anything else, when you have a large-scale emergency, when you have a regional event, the most effective way to organize yourself to address unmet regional needs, multi-jurisdictional needs, is to operate the joint department. VR3T is a great example of that. Our emergency response is an example of that. Coordination with the state and with Hayes County is of the utmost importance. So, thank you, Rich. I appreciate that.
Now, I can share your opinion or get information. You can contact us, and I'm going to leave this up for just a minute, because we have a couple of things up here website-wise that are going to be useful. Contact us at floodrecovery@sanmarcostx.gov. Grab an idea card, leave it in the idea box. It's a wooden box that looks like an old-style ballot box. You don't have to stamp your finger in it, but it is an old-style box in the back for idea cards. Joining the upcoming city council flood workshop, April 25th, this will be the next formal update on activities that have been ongoing on flood recovery. Provide input on the CDVG DR action plan, which this is the very first step in the formal process associated with identifying projects and implementing projects associated with the $25 million awarded through the CDVG DR process. If I have said acronyms, and I've tried to spell a lot of the acronyms as we've gone on, but if I say an acronym that you're not aware of, please raise your hand, and I'll say that, because it can get to be a little bit of an alphabet soup. Follow us and share ideas on city social media. Comments on social media outlets, Facebook and other, are noted. We keep track of those religiously. We take advantage of that type of feedback, and that's a way that you can give feedback instantaneously. We want that. Also, visit up, visit up the San Marcos HUD CDVG Disaster Recovery website. It's currently under construction, but the link is going to be off of our website at www.sanmarcostx.gov. We're going to have that on the front page of our website once we get it completed. So that's going to be the place to find it. You can find the HUD CDVG Disaster Recovery website right off the front page of the City of San Marcos' website when we get it done. Now then, we're talking about polling. While we've done a lot of assessment and information gathering since the flood, we wanted to take this unique opportunity to poll this group and get a better understanding of some key areas related to flood recovery. When you came into the meeting, you should have been issued a polling remote, just like this. Hold them up if you've got them. Okay, thank you. Polling remote, one per household. If you didn't receive one, please raise your hand now, and we'll give one to you. We've got people over here, so if you need one, there's some over here. One per household, yes, ma'am, or yes, sir. Keep them up, they'll bring them to you.
Can I take this to ask you, if I had flood damage in my house, but it was not from a river rising, it was from just water that was running down a slope, is that still counted as being residential? It costs several thousand dollars to fix, when you tear out sheet rock and everything. So am I considered as having residential property damage even though I didn't get assistance from FEMA or any?
I'm going to say that sounds like a yes. I would definitely refer you to talk to Richard Ray Nosa, our floodplain administrator.
Well, I'm asking for purposes of voting.
I see, I see. I would consider that a yes. If you're thinking about, if you received damage to your home for the purpose of voting, running down the street, I know we have high-velocity water running down the street, but this is a direct result of the flooding events. Treat it as one thing. City staff, if you hear me saying something incorrect, please come down and correct me. I'm not too proud to say I made a mistake.
Alright, so with that said, you'll see questions, and it'll be pretty self-explanatory on the remote, how to respond. And apparently some of you have seen the presentation because you're asking very prescient questions. Are you a flood survivor with residential property damage? A, I did not experience property damage. B, I experienced property damage in the Memorial Weekend 2015 flood. C, I experienced property damage in the October 2015 flood. D, I received property damage in both floods. E, this question does not apply to me. Well, at this time, right now, you can press the number, I'm sorry, the letter that corresponds with the answer that applies to you. Do I need to go one?
Press it one time.
Now, press it one time. I apologize. We'll start it over right now. Can we start it over? Okay. Apologize, bear with me. Alright, are you a flood survivor with residential property damage? A, I did not experience property damage. B, I experienced property damage in the Memorial Day flood. C, I experienced property damage in the October 2015 flood. D, I received property damage in both floods. And E, this question does not apply to me. As you type in your responses, we should see information show up on the right side
Should the little window say something?
No. There we go. Okay. I had to hit the button one more time. Alright, so as you can see, the lion's share of responses indicate that they received property damage in both floods, and that's consistent with what we've seen in many areas that were affected. If they were affected in one, they received some damage to a lesser extent during October, in the October flood. Next question. Please don't respond yet. Steven, I'm going to go ahead and go to the next slide. Are you a flood survivor with commercial property damage? A, I did not experience property damage. B, I experienced commercial property damage in the Memorial Weekend 2015 flood. C, I experienced commercial property damage in the October 2015 flood. D, I received commercial property damage in both floods. And E, this question does not apply to me. For the lion's share, and I'm just going to say in this one, most of you are going to be E, because there's not, there's a much larger residential property damage than commercial damage. Yes, sir.
Next question. Is residential property considered commercial or not?
Residential property, the question was, is residential property considered commercial? Oh, rental. Rental property is residential property. Yes, ma'am.
Do we have private, individual property owners that have current account of this property, and have rented?
For our purposes, if it's a residential property, regardless of whether it's owner-occupied or rental, that's considered residential property. Commercial property is going to be, for the purpose of this survey, is a business, for lack of a better word.
So you want everybody to vote?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. As far as this room is concerned, a little bit of commercial property damage in both floods, but most part, most of our residents, or most of the occupants in the room appear to be residential property damage, receive residential property damage in October. That was really more of a question that we were wanting to ask for our own purposes to get an understanding of attendees and the type of damage they received. If you receive residential property damage, do you own or rent? A, I own my home. B, I rent a home. C, I rent a townhouse, condo, or apartment. D, I live in a flood-damaged home, but I'm not the owner or renter. I'm a guest. E, this question does not apply to me. A, I own. B, I rent. C, I rent a townhouse, condo, or apartment. And D, I live in a flood-damaged home, but I'm not the owner or renter. For the most part, the occupants in the room own their home. Next question. If you received commercial property damage, do you own or rent? I own my commercial property, is A. B is I rent my commercial property. And C, this question does not apply to me. As you can see, the majority of the red people in the room, the question does not apply to them. Next question. We have 11 questions, by the way, just to give you a sense of context. Do you have flood insurance? A, yes, before the 2015 flooding events. C: Yes, after the All Saints Day flood. D: No. And E: This question does not apply to me. So, A: Yes, before the 2015 flooding events. B: Yes, after the Memorial Day flood, but not before. C: Yes, after the All Saints Day flood, but not before. And D: No. E: This question does not apply to me. So, the majority of responses do not have flood insurance. Significant number, quarter of the population in the room had it before the 2015 flood, and it declined after that, adding insurance after Memorial Day, adding insurance factors, All Saints. Next question. If you are a flood survivor, are you able to live in your home? A: My home is now livable. B: My home is only partially livable. C: I was not able to move back to my home after the flood. D: This question does not apply to me. If you're still working on your home, but you haven't yet moved into your home, you're going to fall into the C category. I was not able to move back to my home after the flood. So, A: My home is livable. B: My home is only partially livable. C: I haven't moved into it yet. And D: This question doesn't apply to me. Almost half the people in the room have moved, or their home is livable. Only 10%, partially. 18% have not yet moved back into it or can. And D, 24%, the question does apply to you. Next question. Have you submitted a floodplain permit, a floodplain permit application? A: Yes. B: No, I had damage and I have not submitted an application. C: My home was damaged in both floods, but I have only submitted one application. D: I did not receive flood damage. E: The question does not apply to me. Let me go through those answers again. Have you submitted a floodplain permit application? A: Yes. B: No, I had damage and I have not submitted an application. C: My home was damaged in both floods, but I have only submitted one application. D: I did not receive flood damage. And E: This question does not apply to me.
What is a floodplain permit? I'm sorry.
I'm going to have Richard Ranosa come up here to give you a very specific answer to that very relevant question.
Also, this poll is anonymous.
Yes, the poll is anonymous. We're not looking to take any punitive action with regard to what you're doing. This is purely informational. We want you to have information that you can use to help you repair damage and to get back into your homes. We don't want to... This is not for us to find people and have bad things happen to you. Richard, what is a floodplain permit?
A floodplain permit would have been issued from the city. It would have a city emblem on it. You would have come to the city and applied, probably with a building permit. We also did it one day on a Saturday. We came out and issued some of these building permits. So, you would have gotten it from somebody from the city. So, either at the city hall or at the park on the Saturday that we issued permits at that time.
Why would they give one?
You would get one... Anybody that had damages that were affected by the flood should have pulled a floodplain permit. This is a document, all the properties that were damaged and to what level. If it was just cosmetic damages, we have to report that. If it was structural damage, that's recorded. Pretty much anybody that was affected by the flood should have come in and reported that and received a floodplain permit. If you haven't done that to date, please come, talk to me afterwards. We can discuss that and get you set up on that. An either flood, May or October, we want to talk to you and just document that your property was affected and get you a floodplain permit. So, there's no compliance issues moving forward from now on.
What if you live high on a hill and don't live in a floodplain?
You don't have to do it.
You don't have to do it. Specifically within the current floodplain. So, I know there's also been some changes that have been put out by FEMA, the advisory information. It would have... You would have to be in a floodplain at the time of the flood. So, if you've seen changes to the floodplain and you're now in it as opposed to before, you would not need a floodplain permit.
Would our contractor have done that? Do you have a contractor working on the repairs?
I would ask him. I would ask him. They should have done that. They should have come to the cities. If you have a contractor working on your house, he should have put a city building permit, and he should have the floodplain permit. So, if you're not sure, if you haven't seen it, please definitely ask him for that. And if he's not able to provide it or doesn't show you that permit, then he has to come to the city. And one of the requirements that the city has is that the contractor working for you is licensed with the city.
Well, you got the permits to do all the repairs and everything licensed, but I don't know if that's as well.
You can come check with us afterwards. We can look up your address. If we're not able to do it here, we can get your information and get back with you tomorrow on the status of that.
What is the cost to that?
The floodplain permit for the flood damages, there's no cost to that. Now, there may be an associated building permit that may have a cost to it, but the floodplain permit itself has no cost to it. Yes?
Building permit? If it was flood-related damages, the city council and the city manager have said that there's no cost to that building permit as well if it's flood-related damages. But we do need the flood, the floodplain permit.
I just wanted to say that as long as you're the homeowner.
Yes, it's as long as you're the homeowner.
That's correct.
It has to be the homeowner pulling the permit. If it's a contractor or it's a commercial and a contractor's pulling the permit, then there will be a fee for that, for that permit. Is there another question?
How long for those?
They're good for two years.
One of the reasons we collect that information is we need to record damage, repairs, construction elevations, and other information necessary to be compliant with the National Flood Insurance Program. That's why we collect that information. Next question. What would you like the city to do to assist in flood recovery? A: Offer options to help you move out of a flood-prone area? B: Make the area I live in less likely to flood in the future? C: Make my home more resilient to flooding? I agree with that. And this is kind of the start of the type of questions that kind of... I know everybody wants all the above. We're trying to get... This is going to help us as we enter into the phase where we're trying to identify projects that are going to accomplish the objectives stated by the community. We're not working into this process with a predetermined outcome in mind. Obviously, we have ideas about what will work and the very degrees to what will work, but we're not offering solutions. We're asking for solutions of what you would like to see be the outcomes. So, A, I'm sorry. What would you like the city to do to assist in flood recovery? A: Offer options to help me move out of a flood-prone area? B: Make the area I live in less likely to flood in the future? C: Make my home more resilient to flooding? We're all across the board. Majority of them is B, make the area I live in less likely to flood. But as I think the answers prove out what was said, all the above is appropriate answers. Someone say go back. Okay. That's a 60. So, it's 12% on A, 60% on B, 28% on C. Do you have internet access? And this helps us assess how we can best reach out to residents in flood-affected areas and communicate with residents in flood-affected areas. Do you have internet access? Yes, through home internet. B: Yes, through my cellphone. C: Yes, through both my home internet and my cellphone. And D: No, I don't have internet access. So, A is at my home. B is through my cellphone. C is through both. D is no, I don't have it. Majority of people have internet access through both their home and their cellphone. Have you signed up for emergency notifications? A is yes. B is no. And C is I don't know. Sorry. Would the university count? Is that the question? I don't think being a student in and of itself counts as being registered for emergency notifications. They do send out notifications to students in the event of an emergency, but I think that's really only on campus.
It applies both ways, but you need to register both ways. If you're a student, register on campus and register off.
Is that the bottom register your phone?
Okay. Right. And this is important to note.
It's also on the magnets that you have.
Okay. This is on the magnets that you have. I'm going to try to go back real quick. You can register your phone for emergency alerts on the city's website at sanmarcustx.gov/alerts. That's where you would go to register your cellphone for emergency alerts. As far as notifications, have you signed up for emergency notifications? 57% of the people in the room have signed up for emergency notifications. 28% have not. 15% don't know. And I think if you don't know, the best way to go forward is to assume you haven't. Go to sanmarcustx.gov/alerts and go ahead and register again. The worst thing that could happen is you register your cellphone twice. Next question. How would you like to receive information about flood recovery? A: Newspaper. B: Social media, for example, Facebook or Twitter. C: Direct mail. D: Phone calls. E: Text. And F: Other. A: Newspaper. B: Social media. C: Direct mail. D: Phone calls. E: Text. F: Other.
On this one, F is email.
It's email.
And then G is other. On the paper here.
Oh, okay.
Just F is email and G is other.
Can we reset this question so we can do the question according to the pattern of recovery? Can we reset? Put a bar of this and you can read off yours. Stand in front of these options so you can only answer what I'm saying to you earlier. Apologize. I'm not making a lie to this meeting. I really do just want to make sure that you give the right answer. How would you like to receive information about flood recovery? A: Newspaper. B: Social media. C: Direct mail. D: Phone calls. E: Text. F: Email. And G: Other. So, newspaper, B is social media, C is direct mail, D is phone call, E text, F email, and G other. Apologize for the confusion on that question. We reset the responses, and the majority of those are emailed. And we don't have other showing up on the screen. It's cut off on the edge. So, 50% of the room preferred email, and then it was a variety of things with direct mail being the next most highest answer. Now, we've got a number of staff members in the room, including myself and others listed here. Ken Bell, Richard Ranosa. Ken Bell, Emergency Management Coordinator. Richard Ranosa, Floodplain Administrator. Kristy Wyatt is ill tonight. Very ill. Otherwise, because you don't keep our Director of Communications down very easily. So, she's really ill, would like to be here, but she is going to be taken care of communication questions as we move forward. Phil Jackson, Assistant City Manager. Janice Cedricks, as I said, our CDVG expert. And we have Rich Pilgrim from BR3T. We've got a microphone up here. If I can have somebody either walk the microphone around or if someone can... If you have a question, if you can just come to the microphone and line up.
Want to click on the light?
Yes.
Why don't you all come over this way? This court's only going to go so far. All right. If you would, please state your name.
My name is Diane Lotzeneck. I'm with the San Marcos River Foundation. And we have been following flood studies since 2007 here at the city.
Just one moment. We'll make sure we get that one hotter.
I can talk pretty loud.
There we go.
We've been following at the River Foundation since 2007 flood studies, and we realize there is discussion or an idea of a big trench or bypass for the Blanco River. And because we know quite a bit of... I'm not an engineer, but you know, we have engineers that we work with. And we realized that the Blanco floods big enough to cover I-35, so it's a really big river. And it's going to cost a tremendous amount of money to dig a trench big enough for a flood like that. So, we're looking at the costs that were estimated 10 years ago, almost 10 years ago. And we're realizing that if that $25 million is put into a project like that, it's going to be like a drop in the bucket. And we want to make sure there's enough money to raise houses or buy out people who want to be bought out. And so, we're a little worried about that. We wanted to express our concern about that.
So, what was the question?
We're just expressing our concern about the great cost of a bypass and whether that's going to take all the $25 million and not even be anywhere near completing it. And then, there might not be money left for the actual people who need assistance.
I can speak to that to a limited extent. I don't want to get too far ahead of our process and speak to any one project. I do know in the discussions I've had with HUD and with council, I don't think there's going to be any one silver bullet project that received all of the funding. We are going to buy design, and through HUD's design, we're going to focus on both residency projects and individual assistance projects. I don't know what the breakdown on that type of distribution is going to be. I also would say that with regard to the project that Ms. Lotzeneck mentioned, we're certainly not going to take on that by ourselves if we even do it. So, that's going to be a project that will have a matching share. And again, that's a big if. But if it is, if it does go forward, it would have the city contributing a portion of our resources to serve as match. We also have other partners that would also be serving as match or contributing to match. There is no scenario where the Corps of Engineers is going to embark on a project that causes, to the flooding question, that exacerbates flooding beyond what would be experienced without the project. So, those are all things that the Corps is going to have to evaluate. And there's a lot of hoops to jump through if we embark on that project. It is an example of something where we would leverage funds to get much more money spent in our area. But I could not say at this point if that's going to be a project that's undertaken or not for way too great of a process to say that. I would be able to definitively say that no project is going to be undertaken that makes it worse for our neighbors than it would be without the project. Next question.
I was just going to say that part of this process for HUD and CDVG is to do a needs assessment. So, also, the City Council, in order to present this action plan to HUD, they will have... That is what we're here tonight, is to listen to you. And that money has to have a direct correlation to citizen and public input.
Yeah, I think it would only be embarked on if it had marked positive influence or positive effect on baseball elevations on the east side of our city. Yes, sir. What's your name?
So, my name is Rudy Mahosara. I am a PR Senior at Texas State and write certifications for a political org on campus called Searchlist, ultimately looking out for the working people of San Marcos and beyond. First off, I just wanted to state some concern about something that was in the news shortly after the All Saints Day flood. I saw something that a construction project had worsened flood conditions so bad in my neighborhood that the flood levels rose two feet. in my neighborhood that the flood levels rose two feet as a result of that construction. I mean, I'm five-five, that's like half of me, you know? That's like to hear. I mean, that's, I mean, that's just unimaginable to me. So I understand the need for more development in the city, but I just wanted to state that if development is endangering citizens, it's a double solution to our community. And the second part of my question slash statement is, um, I see we're receiving a lot of money and natural disasters do not discriminate, I'm sorry, they do discriminate counter to, you know, probably from New Orleans to San Marcos. From New Orleans to San Marcos, we see working class people, poor people, disabled people, retired people, the hardest hit from every natural disaster. So seeing as how natural disasters prioritize poor, disabled, working class, retiring, retired people, can you assure the public that the money will be used in a way that prioritizes these populations?
That's, yeah, yeah. Uh, you're correct, uh, with regard to your first statement. Uh, the construction for the apartment project did cause, uh, positive, uh, increase, not caused development, but it did cause an increase in the elevation of water on certain properties adjacent to River Road, uh, right by the project. Uh, I don't know, I'll top my head, the number of properties that were actually, uh, in that. I think it stopped less, a little less than one block away. That doesn't, I don't say that to minimize it, I say that to acknowledge that. Uh, to the second statement, uh, a requirement of the CDVG funding, CDVG BR funding, uh, through HUD, uh, is that it's money focused on low-to-moderate income areas of the city that also receive damage. Uh, I can say that, uh, uh, the ways that, that have been presented as options, uh, are all focused on, uh, to every extent possible, making, uh, fix it forever or at least make it better forever to an ex, to the every extent possible in the area most damaged by the floods. And I think as we all know, uh, from a demographic standpoint and from an economic standpoint, the area on the east side of the city, uh, is, uh, characterized as low-to-moderate income by the definitions proposed, uh, or, or measured, uh, by the community belt block grant and through the Housing and Urban Development. So that's where we're focused. I don't think any of this funding has been proposed to be spent, uh, on the west side of thirty-five, although there was damage on the northwest side of thirty-five. I think most of our projects are focused and most of our thoughts and ideas, uh, have been focused on the east side to address, uh, areas like Victory Gardens, like Fairlawn, and like every other part, uh, flood damage area on the east side of the city. So I, I, I think definitively and without question, uh, to your last question about low-to-moderate income residents, working class residents, people who live on the east side and receive flood damage once, twice, you know, however many, you know, times and to whatever extent, that's where we're focusing our efforts and all of our thought.
Uh, and this is getting off the, the twenty-five million a little bit, but VR3T, one of the things that we do focus on, we, we focus to make sure that nobody falls through the cracks. Uh, we want to make sure that whether you're, uh, you know, whether you have, you know, you have money and, and you had flood insurance and you had FEMA and just it didn't quite make that far, or you had nothing, we do what we can to go ahead and help close those gaps and meet those unmet needs. Uh, and I think the, the city itself, uh, the conversations we've had, they share that same philosophy that they want to make sure that, uh, nobody gets left out and, you know, that nobody falls through the cracks.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, um, my name is Caitlin Dural. I kind of had the same concern as Diane as to the, I guess, rumor that y'all have a plan to divert the river. My main question with that would be just what is the likelihood that something like that could actually happen? Um, it just seems like it would have really grave implications on the sanctity of the river.
I, I don't know with the likelihood. I think it'd be premature to say what, what probability of it is. I know that the Corps of Engineers has been evaluating it tentatively since two thousand and seven, in earnest since two thousand and eleven. Uh, initially it was felt that the, uh, cost benefit, uh, part of the, uh, project did not map out. Uh, as FEMA has changed the, or is planning to change base water elevations, the amount of, uh, property, uh, inside the floodplain and the depth to which it's going to increase, uh, at least according to the, uh, preliminary base flood elevation maps that we've seen or, or FEMA's working on, uh, it has changed the map. And a, a bypass project that would have significant impact on base flood elevations will have a significant cost benefit, uh, to the community and to the region. So that's why the Corps of Engineers is still looking at the project. I couldn't say if the project is going to take place. And, uh, part of that analysis is going to have to be, uh, what is the effect on the river? I can't see, uh, the Corps of Engineers, uh, authorizing a project that's going to have an adverse impact. Uh, but I couldn't tell you at all. Uh, I know they're still looking into the project and evaluating the viability of the project.
Hello, Virginia Condi. I hate to be redundant. I just wanted to speak my truth, um, since you're giving us the opportunity.
Sure.
But I sit on the board for the BR3T and have since the day it started. I sit on the board of San Marcos River Foundation and I'm a resident in Martindale. And so the talk of the trench or whatever you want to call it very much concerns me because if you're talking about helping people who have been flooded, we don't need to patch the problem, we need to fix the problem.
Right.
And so raising homes to me seems a very good solution and that does take a lot of money, which it seems that you guys have just come into. Um, the biggest concern I have is moving the problem might help San Marcos today, but just keep in mind that fifteen, twenty years down the road, a lot of the properties surrounding Martindale and Staples is in the San Marcos ETJ. So while you might move the problem today to somebody else, and I know you wouldn't do that intentionally, but just, these are my thoughts. Um, I would just ask that you consider that those areas may very well be in the city of San Marcos someday. And so...
Sure. I'm going to just touch on those in a backwards way.
Yes.
I'm going to hit the last one first. Uh, with regard to, uh, any potential bypass project, all I know from, uh, talking to the Corps of Engineers is that they will not embark on any project that makes situations worse than they would be without the project. So they're not going to shift anything to anybody. Uh, the project is not designed to bypass Martindale. Uh, and I don't think it ever was. I know that I've had conversations with the Mayor of Martindale, uh, over the course of the last couple of weeks. Uh, one conversation with him where, where he expressed his concerns about that. Uh, his request was that it bypassed Martindale. I don't know if that's going to be physically possible or certainly from a, from a cost standpoint. I don't know that the county or the city, uh, either Calvo County or Martindale, uh, would have the resources or would have the, the, the desire to commit in that way. But what I can say from what I've heard from the Corps of Engineers, they're not going to do a project that is going to shift the problem or cause there to be worse flooding than there would be without the project. Uh, but I also know that if they do the project, it's not going to bypass the city of Martindale. It's not designed to.
Let me be clear, I'm not asking you to bypass.
Sure.
The city of Martindale. I'm asking you not to do that project.
Okay.
Because if you, you know, you look at the apartment complex, y'all did a poll. Seventy-five percent of residents said, please don't build those apartments right there. The city of San Marcos blatantly ignored that. And I would just like to say, if you do the trench, you are moving more water downstream faster. There is no way in common sense mind that that does not create more of an issue downstream. And so I just wanted to be, I'm sorry to be a little heated, but it's a sensitive topic.
This is an open place. You can share whatever, what you want. Please be respectful when you have. Uh, the, and the only thing I can say there is that the Corps is going to be the one that's making the, the analysis on that. And they have been very clear with us that they're not going to do anything that's going to exacerbate or, uh, cause flooding situations to be worse than they would, uh, absent the project. With regard to, uh, elevating homes, uh, we do have a limited capacity to do that. It also does not address other property needs in the area with regard to, uh, infrastructure, vehicles, anything that's not inside the home itself that's raised. Uh, so there will be, and, and then there's also the challenge of, of finding out the resources to do all of the houses that would need to be raised. Uh, so, uh, that is absolutely one of the options that's being evaluated. It does have its own challenges associated with it, uh, but I, but I'm never going to say, never on projects that are expressly and specifically noted as options, uh, in the CDVG funding.
Good afternoon, I'm Sharon Smith. Uh, yes, my concern is, I've witnessed, I've been around for the ninety-eight flood and the other floods. Uh, ninety-eight, my, um, daughter was three months old and I couldn't get home. My concern is there going to be any alternate overpasses between thirty-five and Hopkins Street past Hock Arena. Uh, I live between Cheetham and Haynes Street and the first flood in ninety-eight, I couldn't get home with three month old. This last flood, I actually worked in Seguin, I couldn't get home and drive and see in the water. My son's at home on Haynes Street and he can't get out, sent me into a nervous wreck. So my concern is there going to be some alternate overpasses, some alternate ways out of San Marcos, into San Marcos because all I could think about was my son was gone and here I go again with another flood.
Uh, I have not heard any projects discussed to date. I know that as a result of that comment right there, we're going to certainly look into the, uh, option. The stated objectives, uh, of the flood, uh, or of the funding, uh, at least the desired outcome would be that we are more resilient to flooding, that we don't, that it doesn't happen as much. Uh, although, uh, egress in a flood event would be something that we could consider and will consider.
Yeah, I guess you don't know it until you've been there because it's, it haunts me every day when it rains. Thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I'm Todd Sawing and I recognize many of the faces around here. Uh, this has been a team effort to have to deal with floods. It's a community effort. It has to be by necessity. I, and, and so I definitely appreciate it, um, that it will require many, many people and it'll require a long time to do it. The question I come out is, these meetings are great, these forums are good, we have the conversation, the face to face. Um, I know when there's an emergency that happens, uh, the EMC, the Emergency Management Responder, he's the person in charge, right? So that's Ken, right? Those, that's who you call. Who is the person, I mean, we've got twenty-five million dollars, we've got all these other grants, seven hundred houses still yet to be repaired. Who is the person in the city that is the point contact on this?
Ultimately, it's me. Uh, but the best way to contact us and get information and get immediately or get timely response, I don't have the website, but it was...
Floodrecovery@SanMarcosTX.gov.
The email address is floodrecovery@sanmarcostx.gov. That's where you're going to get your best, most thorough and most timely answer to any questions you've got. We have a team operating this, uh, venture and meeting almost on a daily basis and there's about eight people, including most of the people you see in front of you right now that meet every day to talk about, uh, the next step for the process to coordinate with other cities that have received this type of funding. Uh, CDVG has put us in contact with other cities that have done excellent jobs of administering their funds. There are a lot of hoops to jump through, as you saw on the timeline. We want to make sure that we do it right. We want to be the poster, the next poster child for housing and urban development as we do such a good job of administering these funds. But to do that, uh, it takes a group of people. So there's not one person that's going to be able to answer your question. We have a team. Each of them have their, uh, area of emphasis. If you need one person to contact, contact me, uh, and, and I will be able to get the answer you need. But the best place to go, the best place to email a detailed question is floodrecovery@sanmarcostx.gov.
Sure. So obviously people should do that process first. Sometimes you get, feel like a little bit of a runaround, sometimes it's not happening and, and, and people do fall through the cracks. So would that be to call, to call your office at that point? What's the best way to get, I mean, you're saying you're the...
If you can get ahold of me or Colette. Yeah, we're, we're in a, in the process of hiring a consultant to assist us, uh, in this process. This is something that was recommended, uh, by HUD, uh, that we find a qualified consultant that has experience administering these type of funds. Uh, so once we have that entity on board, uh, we will give out their contact information as well because they will be very experienced in how to address the concerns of residents and how to, uh, answer questions you have.
My name is Robert Hager. I live in the area over there around River Road. I've been through all the floods since nineteen ninety-two. Uh, and I was concerned, um, also about the building of the Woods Apartments down there. And I was really surprised when the study came out that showed that there was a bunch of damage happened there. I missed, I missed the, uh, the seminar on that or whatever you had that, that showed what happened as a result of that backing up the waters there. And I, I, uh, also in regards to the trench that's been mentioned here, there is a trench resource that's been being done for twenty-five years in the bend of the river, right at the end of Bug Lane where the river bends. It's in that pit over there that's on the city property. And all that water, that, that, in my opinion, I'm not an engineer, but the water, the river curves there, there's a big pit there and, and it is, to me, it looks like it's a diversion. And, uh, the last floods that I have seen, there was a lot of water went through there, was diverted through there. Now, I'll go further downriver, I may have been damaged more if that, if that pit went there. But to me, that looks like a diversion that sheds the water right over toward River Road and right over into the area which I'm concerned about, right down toward the Woods Apartments. I, I just do not see how the Woods Apartments caused that blocking, that much water. But has anybody, has anybody taken in concern in what happened at the bend of the river there with all the soil that's being removed there, this huge pit and curve of the river?
There's, there's two things to talk about, uh, talking about the river, uh, as it's adjacent to Highway eighty and specifically to Victory Gardens. Uh, if you look at the two-D analysis, it's obvious that water is entering the neighborhood over at Bug Lane and River Road. Uh, there is a low point in that, in the river right there in the bank. Uh, it's, it's very clear when you look at the animation of the two-D analysis. Um, and one of the, uh, among many, and like I said, I'm not going to get into specifics of, of, uh, my objective is not to lead, uh, the community to a solution, but we are evaluating different options that will have to be considered. And one of them would be to modify, uh, the banks to, uh, modify the, uh, you know, to, to profile the banks, uh, to better handle the water through that area and to, to be less prone to jump the bank, uh, in the area of the neighborhood. Uh, you know, that's going to have its own ripple effects, so those would all have to be evaluated and analyzed, uh, from an engineering standpoint. But the erosion in the river does change the way the water flows and where it goes. Uh, we would need to manage that in order to have a, a viable, uh, project that would not affect people either downstream or upstream, but would protect the neighborhood from a water jump, from the river jumping the banks.
I'm not talking about the river jumping the banks there. I'm talking about it, it is low and there's, there's soil being taken away, uh, millions of yards for twenty-five years and then that is, it's, in essence, is a trench down in the floodway and it is, does divert water over in the direction of, uh, the intersection of River Road and, and home Martindale Road.
And I think, I, I understand I'm not going to answer exactly what you're asking, but I know that we're looking in that area and we will be looking at solutions that would modify how the water flows in the area around there.
My name is, uh, Vaki and I have three things that I wanted to ask. Uh, number one, since the, uh, last year and from the floods of October, have there been any kind of even minor projects that have been started on or finished to help water flow? Number two, is there any requirement being made upon the developers or owners of Woods Apartments to redo their drainage system to help water drain a little bit better? And then the third thing is, um, back during the drought, there were times that I would pass over the Blanco River, uh, must have been the old Martindale Highway or there's a bridge that crosses back there off of, uh, River Road. And the river, of course, there was no water in it really and it would just load up with trash and brush and trees and everything. It would have been a great time to come in there and clean that out because it seems like that is stopping a lot of the water flowing and slowing it down, but nothing ever happened with it. And then, of course, then we have the floods. So I'd love to address those two things.
Sure. I think the one that I'll be least able to address is the last one. And you want to touch on that and I'll hit the other two.
Three and what?
I'll do drainage projects and I'll hit the wood.
So your drainage issue regarding debris, we're working with an RCS right now, that twenty-seven million they talked about, they're about related to the money we're talking about tonight. Uh, we're trying to get our hands on some of that. It's about a million dollars a mile to clean that debris. Uh, we did it in, uh, after the, you know, two thousand and seven, uh, flood, or, uh, two thousand and seven, uh, we did it from the interstate to Highway eighty. That was a million dollars for that distance. So that price has gone up, uh, but we are in a really good position. We don't have those dollars yet. It usually takes us about two years to get... It usually takes us about two years to get it. It takes us about a year to implement it. We have to deal with environmental, historical preservation, whole nine yards. So we gotta make sure we don't hurt anything while we're cleaning all that stuff. We did that cleanup, and again, you know, the next flood came 2013, and which also gets to some of those projects that the city mayor will visit about. But we actually have a project underway from 2013 that was damaged out River Road and Bug, and it's finally done now, actually.
Since October, there have been no, and really since May, there have been no drainage projects in the area that have initiated. We're going to make sure that whatever drainage projects we do, we wanna focus our efforts on projects that can have a bang for the buck. Until we finish an evaluation phase, I think it would be premature or rash on our part to start on a project that would use resources and possibly not have a measurable effect on the area. We wanna make sure it benefits the area to every extent possible. And with regards to the woods, there's been no requirement to this date, or no agreement on their part, to do any type of project to modify or expand the capacity of their drainage system. We're having conversations with them, and we will have at our next council meeting, or I'm sorry, April 23rd.
25th.
25th. Their engineers will be there to discuss the performance of their drainage and answer questions from council.
All right. I think I might be the last speaker. My name is Clifford Robertson, and I deliberately wanted to go last. First of all, I just wanna say, this year, well, it's been less than a year, but it's almost a year, I've got to know the city council, the changes in the city council, that when they see me, they even wave. I appreciate you. I can't remember the name, but I know you. Thank you. But the one thing that I'm asking, well, first of all, I wanna say thanks to what information we've had. There's been a lot of consolings and, you know, this is my fiance's home. She's, you know, proud mother that bought that house in Blanco Gardens. Even though I tried to get her to move away from here, we're there. So now we're into the second stage of the house to get in it. We were less than a week away, and then with the second flood getting back. So we're gonna have this house razed. Now, resilience, I just ask that as you all prepare your action plans, because we understand, I think I forgot the number of homes that still haven't been attempted or are still out there.
And that's just, that's just what we know.
That you know, right? You divide that, 25 million, the average cost, just to raise a 1,200, 1,250 square-foot home, concrete, it's $55,000.
$600,000.
Oh, yeah, and the 600,000 cents, okay? But the way it is, it's set up, FEMA's only, right now, and you have to qualify for that offer of 300, I mean 30,000, okay? Which so far, they've approved us for 15. So if you're gonna talk about resilience, and how we can do that, people are upset, not upset, but they're talking pretty much what we all know. We're not gonna go here and dig drains because it's gonna affect someone else downstream. Help the people to help themselves. Because I retired from a company, we did action plans all the time, okay? It's like, sometime it can get to be, what's the flavor this month? It's retaining the customers. At this point, it's retaining how we're gonna survive. So I ask that you all, think about that, because at some point, because of the elevation, I don't think everybody really heard, okay, that it's gonna be redone now, where the city and FEMA says that it should be a foot above the floodplain. So, pretty much. That's why we're raising our house two feet. So the difference between one foot and two feet is a little over $12,000. So, that being said, would you please look at that and help us? And for your group, I wanna say thank you.
It's not, it's not me, we have some great people working with us.
Well, after your conversation with Richard, Richard knows me by name. He sees me, hey, Mr. Robertson, that's it. But he says, would you go talk to this group? Because the second flood is where we lost everything that we were able, okay, to save out of the first one. And that's where you guys came in. Thanks.
So if you think we can do help, let us know.
I have one more question, if I can do it, if your elements people to ask questions.
Yes, ma'am. Once we have this question, we're going to break into, well, man the tables. We'll stick around here for some time, and y'all can go around and ask questions of staff of BR3T, and we can get into a little more detail with regard to your specific situation. Yes, ma'am.
This is where, I don't know exactly how to ask this question, but you assured me that the Corps would not do anything to damage a river or anybody downstream. And, you know, the Corps doesn't have a great history in regards to rivers, so I take that with a grain of salt. I know you believe that, but I don't necessarily believe it. And so my question is, how do you make a new confluence and a new path, a side channel, a bypass, whatever, for the Blanco River and not affect somebody? I mean, it's going to affect somebody somehow. And, you know, engineers model things to be for a 100-year flood or a 200-year flood, and we know from seeing around San Marcos that we can have a flood that is twice the volume of what we just had this year. And so when you build something that is for a flood like we had this year, and it handles that, and then you have a flood that's worse than that, and people have moved into places where they thought they were now safe because you built this bypass, or say the bypass overflows, how do you deal with floods that are worse than we've had and worse than you planned for?
But any, any solution that is embarked on will be built to a certain standard. I don't know what that standard is. It's gonna be built to handle a certain level of flooding. Anything beyond that will not be handled. It's gonna be a flood just like what we have. So we can only build to an achievable benchmark, and anything beyond that will overtop whatever measure we put in place. I think we're, we're used to that. The main objective here is to make us as resilient and resistant as we can be, be able to handle a much wider range of flood events without damage. Obviously, those, you can't plan beyond a certain level, not within a reasonable amount of money. So you can't be able to plan for every scenario. We'll plan for reasonable scenarios and expected scenarios, make it better in as many situations as possible for residents, and that's it. We get into some type of drainage, reprofiling project, grid railway modification project or bypass project. I can't speak to the specific engineering, don't know it. That has not been done yet. But what I can say is that what's been told me by the Corps of Engineers is due to a project, it's not going to cause flooding worse than what would have been experienced without the project. Does that mean they're still gonna flood? Absolutely. It will not be as resistant to flooding as the areas that the project addresses. But I don't, like I said, I don't know what the solution is. We have not engineered it, we have not planned it. We know that it's being worked on by the Corps, and we will pay attention to that, participate in that as necessary. One more question. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Mary Beth Harper, and I live downstream of the conflicts of the San Marcos and Blanco River. Okay, we've been living in that same location since 1970. Okay, the May flood was the first time we ever had water as hot as it's been here through all the other floods, had no damage. I'm trying to be nice, this is a church. [laughter]
Are we?
Okay. Since we've been out where we are, I've noticed all of these apartments that have been built from floodplains. Okay, I'm up way up there by Blanco, by Epic Piping, whatever you speak, but the building, all around out here by the jail, the stuff out here along River Road, and also the Woods Apartments, which to me is, again, it's a church, I won't say it. But anyway, what, how many apartments does the city of San Marcos have planned to build on floodplains now?
None. Do we have it? I thought, because we're modifying our, there are no apartments that are built underneath the flood, base flood elevation. Now, are they originating inside floodplains? There are a number that are inside floodplains. There are none in the planning stages right now that I'm aware of that are inside the floodplain. We're modifying right now through our land development code, development standards inside the floodplain and inside the floodway. So it's going to be much more restrictive, I believe. It will require what might possibly be a standard that can't be reached. But I don't, we don't have any projects that are in the planning stages right now. We do have existing apartments inside the floodplain, and that's one of the reasons why we're modifying the development standards in those areas right now.
Every one of those should be, hold on a second. Okay, another question. Oh, one of my questions I was going to ask was about cleaning out the river channel, Blanco River channel. How about deepening the channel? They got all the ground that's been washed in.
Well, we have to be careful what we do in the river channels because of the environmental impacts, believe it or not. We eventually monitor and watch that. They do some of the groundwork, but mostly it's just the debris is all they touch within RCS.
Okay, how about any flood control projects upstream?
NRCS is working to, since we brought it to their attention, there was damage to some of the five flood control dams upriver of the city of San Marcos. So they are evaluating those dams, they're also evaluating the waterways below those dams. So they will do some clean clearing of debris, they'll also do repairs on the dams. They're not gonna build any new dams through that process. They only repair dams. That funding that we tapped is only for repair of existing NRCS dams. So if it's not an NRCS dam, we won't be able to effect change there. If it is an NRCS dam, they'll be able to make repairs, they'll also be able to make repairs to the waterway clearing downstream.
I'm talking about building on the Blanco River, not the...
The Corps of Engineers is also evaluating, that would be a component of the project that they're looking at, would be incorporating possibly flood control dam or dams upstream of us. I don't know where that would be. Would it be in Blanco County? Would it be in Hayes County? No information on that. That's not something that's been shared with us as to viability, efficacy, or desirability, but it is something that they're looking at. And I think we probably have a major cost of impact.
Anyway, the May flooding affected us mainly from the Blanco River side of the...
Correct.
San Marcos River side.
Yep.
And we also got flood, I got text messages I needed to evacuate. Okay, the Blanco River was going over the Highway 80 bridge, right downstream from my house was another low water crossing. I took the evacuate, I had, got you. Robinson, I was kinda locked there. Here's the...
So at this point, we're gonna jump over to the tables. You're free to leave if you want, but we're gonna stick around here and answer any questions you've got. I wanna make sure and remind everyone about the magnets you've received. Please put them on your refrigerators on somewhere where you can see it easily and readily. Also, we can have assistance for non-English speakers. We'll be able to help you and family members or anybody else that needs Spanish assistance. I wanna offer a special thanks to Hill Country Christian Church for offering us this location. Pastor Tom, hey, before you get out, before, hey, I need everyone's attention real quick. Before you leave, we need to turn in those clickers. Thank y'all for reminding me of that. We gotta have those for Saturday and for all of our other surveying events. Please return the clickers. Thank you to Pastor Tom Ray for letting us use this place. Next meeting's on Saturday. Thank you very much.